Good morning, everyone. Welcome to Friday the 13th. This is a meeting of the Licensing Subcommittee taking place in the Walton Room, Winchester, and the time is now, as you all just heard, ten o'clock. My name is Mike, councillor of Weybridge. I will be chairing this particular meeting. The introduction on my left is councillor Chris Westwood.
Councillor Brian Leane.
And other people present, we will start with our solicitor.
David Mount, the case officer.
I am secretary interim to the licensing manager. Detective Police Service, solicitor.
Detective Canon Democratic Status Officer, Mary Jean Neeson.
P C Brian Swallow, Police Licensing Officer, representing Chief Officer of the Office.
Good morning, Sir. Julia Palmer, representing the Colonel Clark, the license holder.
Colin Clark, that's a solid exchange.
Thank you very much. In also in attendance, we have David Blakemore, who is doing the recordings. And this is to advise that all parts, all open parts of the meeting are being audio recorded and live streamed to the council's website. In addition, the audio recording of the meeting will be uploaded to the council's YouTube channel after the meeting. That is the reason why we couldn't start dead on ten o'clock until dead on ten o'clock, even though that clock genuinely tells us it's five minutes past the hour. Can I remind people that to turn off their mics when not speaking, the location of the button, all members have now found it at the base of the microphone stand. Can I remind members to speak clearly and demand you to use your microphones? Finally, I'm asked everyone to ensure that the mobile phones and other electronic devices are switched to silent, flight mode, so we don't want to intercept the proceedings. Now moving on to the agenda, disclosure of interests.
I've received an answer.
Thank you. The hearing regulations require that a hearing should take place in a form of a discussion led by the Subcommittee and a cross, and that cross-examination will not normally be allowed. We will be following the adopted procedure of these hearings, which is set out on the reverse side of the agenda paper. Each party will be allowed equal maximum time to exercise their right of the hearing. I will exercise my discretion to allow additional time if necessary, taking into account the requirement to allow all parties equal maximum time. Only those points contained in the written representations, the report and the supplementary documents can be raised. No new evidence can be considered, except that with the agreement of all parties. Could I therefore ask that the case be put, please?
I'll introduce the report for you, Chair.
Thank you.
So this is an application to review the premises license currently in effect at the Exchange on Nine Southgate Street, Winchester. The application is being made by P C Brian Swallow of Hampshire and St Mirrie on behalf of the Chief Officer of the Police, who is a responsible authority under the Licensing Act 2003. The application relates to all four of the licensing objectives, so that is prevention of crime and disorder, public safety, prevention of public nuisance and protection of children from harm. The application proposes the imposition of conditions on the premises license to promote the four licensing objectives and also the removal of Mr Colin Clark as the designated premises supervisor. The full application can be seen at Appendix One to the report, which is pages thirteen to seventeen. Since the application has been submitted, there has been some correspondence between the police and the license holder's legal advisor in relation to the conditions. The correspondence can be seen in Appendix Six and Seven of the Agenda Pack. Please note that P C Brian Swallow also submitted additional evidence yesterday, which I have marked as Appendix Eight and distributed to everyone where you were sat down. If you don't have a copy, let me know. I do have a spare one here. So certain evidence submitted by the police has been deemed sensitive and not to be heard in a public forum. Members are reminded that they may pass a resolution to go into exempt session in accordance with the relevant provisions of the Local Government Act 1972 and the Licensing Act 2003 Hearings Regulations 2005. I understand that those key to the decision-making process have already reviewed that evidence, but we do have the option to re-review it if any party feels it necessary today. No representations have been received from responsible authorities and ten representations have been received from other persons, which can be seen as Appendix Two. There are some of those parties present today who wish to address the Subcommittee. Members are reminded that those addressing the Subcommittee may only refer to matters relating to the four licensing objectives. The Subcommittee's options for determination of this application can be seen on page eight of the Agenda Pack, and I welcome any questions that you might have. Thank you, Chair.
The Subcommittee has read all the written comments on the application review, which are included in the reports. I understand that there are...
Councillor, can you use your microphone, please?
I understand that the following persons wish to be addressed to Subcommittee, and I have a list before me when we come to that particular evidence. As already stated, we can only consider the issues relating to the four licensing objectives: the prevention of crime and disorder, public safety, prevention of public nuisance and the protection of children. The Subcommittee will also have regard to the national guidance and the council's licensing policy. The applicant for the review, please.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, committee. To start with, I'd like to make the committee aware that I've had no contact with Mr Clark, the premises license holder and DPS, and only one brief email from his legal representatives during the statutory twenty-eight day consultation period and the period from the end of that consultation date to today's hearing. I find this very alarming, considering I've made an application for review whereby I'm seeking conditions to be added to the license and Mr Clark's removal as DPS. Prior to this hearing, I supplied body worn video camera footage of my colleagues' attendances at the pub on various days, and as the saying goes, picture paints a thousand words, although I do have a couple more words that I wish to say to add context to those videos and the issues surrounding the pub and its management. The Exchange is in a city pub that has made physical accommodations to accommodate the health protection regulations and the effects of the pandemic. The main changes were to the rear external area whereby fixed bench seating has been installed and upgraded. Since the face reopening of the hospitality industry, the Exchange has stood out as having a disproportionate number of incidents to any other pub in Winchester. These include nearby pubs with greater capacity, with a similar demographic of customer and the ability to screen live sporting events. When a pub puts its head above the parapet, ultimately, we will make an early engagement with the DPS to find out if there's any underlying issues that is causing the incident. With this pub, it was quite clear that issues were down to a lack of any diligence. There was no documented staff training, which led me to believe that the staff were not trained to prevent intoxication or deal with refusals or confrontation. There was no record of any refusals being made through the intoxication or those underage. There was also no documented age verification policy. In my opinion, regardless of a venue's premises license benefits from these conditions, in today's socially responsible world of hospitality, these few basic measures should be mandatory. We advise Mr Clark of these following reports of over-intoxication from the pub. Disappointingly, further incidents reported to us, which instigated a further personal visit. It's my amazement Mr Clark had adopted none of the discussed measures and offered no suitable explanation for not doing so. As such, he was sent a formal email detailing the steps that needed addressing to prevent any further instances. This matter was becoming quite concerning as the venue, since the face reopening, started to attract a very young attendance demographic. At the pub were several wall-mounted TVs and newly built external seating would undoubtedly be busy for the European Football Championship. It was a serious incident on the thirteenth of June this year that has led to my review application. This date was the first England fixture in the Euros. A young male had only recently turned eighteen, so had not legally been drinking in pubs before, had become completely illibriated at the pub. That, along with his friends, had been asked to leave. As his friends were escorting him out, he falls face first onto the pavement. From watching the body worn video of the attending officer who arrived moments after, I would suggest that he was so drunk that he didn't even put his hands out to prevent injury, as he had a massive swelling to his left eye and cheek. Unfortunately, today I've not been able to track down this young man to ascertain the level of injuries to his face. Now, I'm not a medical professional, but as a police officer of twenty-five years' experience and over ten years' experience as a licensing officer, I've seen several similar injuries from night time economy incidents, some of them firsthand, the majority of which had fractures to either the chinbone or eye socket, or sometimes both. What was totally unacceptable was the level of intoxication of this young man. He was so drunk, he clearly could not comprehend the level of injury he may have sustained. His friends can clearly hear in the officer's video explaining that the young man had been drinking lots of shots. When the same officer walked through the pub after helping the injured male over for the paramedics, she highlighted Mr Clark, a large build-up of uncollected glassware on the tables, and suggested that maybe he considers using plastics. Amazingly, he suggested that plastics were more resistant than glass, a notion that I can still not comprehend. On the following day, I attended the pub to see Mr Clark and see what had been documented regarding the incident and what measures he had adopted from previous communications. Firstly, he had to be prompted as to what incident I was referring to. Surely, a customer causing a potentially serious injury to their face who had been permitted to become completely illibriated in his pub may have dropped his memory. I asked to see the documented training given to the staff on duty for that day regarding intoxication, but there was none. I asked to see the records of refusal for intoxication or for being underage the day prior. There was none. I asked to see a copy of the incident book detailing the injury to one of his customers from that day prior. There was none. I cannot believe, while I was hearing, Mr Clark could make no effort to heed a professional advice to prevent incidents at the pub, even though he would dastardly try and suggest that the male was not drunk and had actually been pushed out the door by his friend causing him to fall. If that had have been the case, we, the police, would have looked at this from the criminality aspect. We did not. If matters could not get any worse at the pub, three days after submitting my application for review, a member of Mr Clark's bar staff was sexually assaulted at the pub. You may not be surprised to learn that the offender was drunk. In fact, the young man responsible arrived at the pub to watch yet another England football match. His friends had arrived several hours before, so they suggested he should catch up with a drink. He did so by drinking shots. In his own words in his former police interview for the offence, he states, "He has never been that drunk in his life." And he was amazed that they carried on serving him and his drunk friends as they were all smashed. That's his words, not mine. He said that his group had been warned by bar staff after about an hour into the game that they would be asked to leave at the final whistle, as they were too drunk and rowdy to stay after the game. However, for the next thirty minutes of the televised game, ridiculously, they carried on serving the group happy. The assaulted member of staff, who has since resigned from the pub, had written in the now instigated incident book that a group of drunken males were asked to leave and were sexually assaulted as they left. When I again challenged Mr Clark regarding the intoxication levels of his customers, he again tried to suggest that the group were not drunk and it was subjective, even though it had been written in the incident book by his member of staff who had been sexually assaulted. On the twenty-ninth of June, another football match, another issue, this time a member of staff called police to say that they found a bag of drugs, poorly cocaine, in their toilets and gave suspects a name. Now, drugs in pubs is not a new issue. In fact, I would say that drugs are in the overwhelming majority of pubs in this country, probably if not all of them. What is a concern is that when visiting pubs, speaking to Mr Clark about the drugs, I find myself again amazed by the lack of any diligence. No staff training, no posters, no proactive measures, no records of any objections for drug-taking. A basic wipe test in both the men's and women's toilets during this visit gave a positive indication for cocaine in both toilets. The only mentionable proactive measure at the pub was a blank board suggesting that the pub has a zero tolerance to drugs. I would suggest that it actually should have read, "We do zero to prevent drugs being taken on your premises," because they do. Another reason for this visit was I had received intelligence that members of staff, including Mr Clark, had received an education via the NHS Track and Trace process that they needed to isolate, but failed to do so. Now, you would assume, wrongly in this case, that as a premises license holder and there had been a lawful requirement for everybody, including staff, to either scan the NHS QR code or sign a logbook with a legal minimum criteria when they enter a hospitality venue, then you would be fully versed with the legislation, even more so if you lived on the premises, so you were technically letting people into your house. No, not Mr Clark. I'd stand there and wait for well over five minutes while he attempted to access the app on his mobile phone, which had clearly been turned off, and I would suggest hardly if ever used, and that's the app, not his phone. There were no customers in the pub at the time of this visit, but two members of staff. When asked, one suggested that her phone had broken, but one challenged further, produced her working phone. When the NHS app was uploaded, it immediately came up with an isolation warning for eight days. The isolation period at that time was ten days. She'd stated she had never scanned into the pub. The other member of staff stated that she did not have the app as she worked in the health sector. As such, I asked if she had normally signed into the venue. She had not. During both conversations, Mr Clark stood there like a rabbit in the headlights. I would strongly suggest that neither he nor his staff have checked in as lawfully required, but I can only assume that there are two reasons for this, and it's selfishness and greed. On the twenty-fourth of July, you will now not be surprised to learn that there was a further incident at the pub. Two groups had become embroiled in a fight whilst in the pub beer garden watching the rugby on the TV screens. The treble-nine caller said that the owner had been assaulted whilst trying to separate the parties. Police spoke to one male from the group, who were able to stag do and was identified as the instigator of the fight. During the melee, he'd been punched in the face and receiving an injury. From watching the body worn video of a police officer dealing with this male, he was clearly drunk. He was unsteady on his feet, he was constantly repeating his sleep phrases, and his speech was slurred. Apologies for not submitting the body worn footage of this incident, but as I only reviewed the incident yesterday, I did not want to place the burden on the licensing authorities and her team on the eleventh hour. The incident occurred on the first weekend following the lifting of Covid restrictions that previous month. I would strongly suggest that even though with no knowledge of the hospitality industry, would assume that on that first weekend, it might be a tad busy. Amazingly, not Mr Clark, who yet again decided that employing the SIAU security was just not required. I have addressed several times with Mr Clark the lack of SIA credit security on his busy days and when he had had incidents. Since reopening, he has utilized the services of two local lads who have been tasked and managed the pub and his customers. Mr Clark was repeatedly told by himself in no uncertain terms that this was inadequate. They were not accredited by the SIA. They could not physically lay hands on anybody, therefore they could not eject anybody and they could not search anybody. They had also not been DBS checked to part of the SIA accreditation process to be able to deal with vulnerable people. As they had not been accredited by the SIA, they had not undertaken the statutory four weeks' worth of training where such subjects as conflict management, first-hand, excited delirium, but the safe physical restraint techniques are taught. Now Winchester has a very proactive and well-attended pub watch scheme, even has a mobile app so that you can log incidents, get up-to-date information from the scheme, message from responsible authorities, et cetera. It also comes with a pub watch radio giving the opportunity to liaise with the local authorities' CCTV and other venues. So why would you not attend these meetings to see who is on the ban list or seek to utilize the radio system? Why would you not propose an individual for a ban who had sexually assaulted a member of your staff? Why would you not propose an individual for a ban who's stuck in your face? Mr Clark even had the nerves to state to his area manager that he would either be attending the next meeting or sending a member of his team. The irony of that was that that was the actual date of that pub watch meeting, the seventh of July, where there was an online pub watch meeting, and nobody from the pub had attended. I've also checked the police records for the incident of the twenty-fourth of July. There was no formal disclosure request for the offender's details. I've also checked the pub website. The man identified as the offender for the assault does not appear. Yet another person who is free to visit pubs in Winchester and commit further assaults. Now, Mr Clark may well tell us today that he's started actioning some of the areas that have been highlighted to him over the past couple of months. We have been supplied some blank documentation, but surely copies of endorsed records and live records would have shown that they're actually being in place and being utilized. He might even tell us that he intends to put his staff through SIA or personal license holders' courts, but he has proved no evidence of such. He may well tell us that he intends to send staff to local pub watch meetings, but as yet, they haven't. However, it is all a little too late. A customer's been seriously hurt in his pub, a member of staff has been sexually assaulted, situations that could have been prevented if he had have implemented staff training, if he had hired SIA security and if he had any diligence at his pub. Mr Clark would have clearly made a lot of money during the Euro football competition. Some might say this is small consolation to the hardship that the hospitality industry has faced in the last eighteen months due to the pandemic. Yet, as I mentioned towards the beginning of my report, the incidents at the pub are vastly disproportionate to all others in the city. Why? Because they have SIA, all staff on key dates, they have staff training, they record refusals, they have age verification policies, and they put the safety of their staff and customers over profit. I'm aware that Mr Clark has been at the pub several years, and for many of those years, incident-free, but I have no confidence in moving forward. He is lazy, selfish and incompetent, and as such, I seek his removal as DPS. I also seek conditions to be added to the premises license in relation to best hiding security, body worn video, CCTV, staff training, refusals recording, age verification, drugs policies, DPS qualifications, incident recording, tilt trons and pub watch attendance and radio usage. Now, rather than reading out the conditions I proposed in full, I've supplied those for you, and I think you have those in your pack. That ends my report. I'm glad you'll take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, P C Swallow. Any questions?
No. I think that's very clear and concise.
Thank you very much.
No further questions.
Thank you, P C Swallow.
I wonder if I could interject at this stage, because you heard about one date that I have absolutely no information on prior to today, and that was the twenty-ninth of July, I think you said, where you talked about the bags of drugs in the toilet?
Yeah.
And the track and trace. Have you visited any information about that? Written information from people? If you could give me the information that you believe you sent it to the council to make that matter.
Councillor, I'm sorry, P C Swallow, can you put your microphone on the post?
So, yeah, it's a good point. Well presented. I think, because I made those attendances in person, spoke to Mr Clark directly for those instances, yeah, I've reflected to a little bit of the meeting slogan.
So I wonder if I could then have a few minutes with Mr Clark, because we've not had a chance to discuss this client today to do exactly that, as they come out of the blue.
I just say, no reason why not, thank you.
Nice work, Councillor. Thank you very much.
P C Swallow, the information that only we've given all of the time, I presume that's where we have our notebook at some stage?
No, I tend not to use a notebook in all honesty. What we have is a computer record management system where every licensed premises within Hampshire and Loughborough have its own incident record, and on that, we are going back with every instant of crime, every incident of unsayable behavior, probably gets reported to us, gets individually logged. We also have the ability to input details of any visits, which is what I do. So I am intent to, I can't remember the last time I used a notebook in all honesty, if I had to write a statement as evidence, that would be my initial notes, and I would mention that in my statement. Sorry, I'm sorry to ask such a question, not in my book, but I recall it on that, please for P C.
Thank you, P C Swallow. There are no other responsible authorities present, therefore move on to other persons. Are there any other persons who wish to address the meeting? The general or... You do, yeah. But I was, if you put, I've been pressing the rest, I'm not sure if I can say it. Have you suddenly...
It's in the fantasy.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Mr, Chair.
Yeah, I have.
You might wish to call the...
The interesting thing, you've been doing that for a long time. Liz Appleton, no, Tommy Appleton. John, yes, okay. Place twenty-eight on our reports. That was pretty normal, ladies. If you would speak now.
Use your microphone, please, then. Use your microphone, please, sir.
And, yes, well, I'd just like to say first that I'm only one person here today, but I think I can say that I'm representing a group of friends of mine, four friends, who visit the Exchange regularly, and also my son and his group of friends who also visit the Exchange regularly. So although I'm just one person... So although I'm just one person, I may be representing eight or nine people total. And for my son and that myself, I would say that the exchange is our favourite pub in Winchester, so I'll make my position clear. Um, I'm a resident of St Cross in Winchester and normally I visit the exchange regularly. Obviously, in the last 18 months, that's not really been the case because of Covid and everything. I've been keeping my head down. But for the last seven or eight years, we've been making the business to the exchange. Personally, I can only speak as I find, I've always found the exchange to be a well managed and friendly environment where I can watch a football match and have a drink enjoyably and safely. In my experience, the atmosphere is normally calm, occasionally lively when a big match is on. But I've never experienced rowdy behaviour there and I've always felt at ease as a customer there. Bear in mind that I'm now a pensioner, I'm not a young man and my friends are not youngsters either. But we've never felt uncomfortable at the exchange ourselves, on the speakers can keep going back there. I did not know the exact circumstances of this, you know, hearing today, the instances of public nuisance, they weren't made very clear. And I saw it in the Chronicle a couple of days ago and obviously we get more details today. So I've only just really found out about the actual instances. Um, but all I can say is that for me, in my experience, unruly or drunken behaviour has not been the norm at the exchange, in fact, the opposite. I've always found it calm and more inviting, I've always found it pub friendly and well managed. Now, obviously, P C Swallow's seen things recently that he's not been happy with, considers behaviour to be unruly, but even injuries and assaults aren't a great. I just have to wonder whether the exchange has suffered from a sudden influx of atypical clientele as lockdown started to ease, and atypical behaviour as these people unfortunately went a little wild as the lockdown restrictions reduced. We've all seen reporting any responsible behaviour elsewhere on TV. For example, as the public parks have been opened, people drinking, being stupid in the parks. And during the Euros tournament, in fact, even inside only itself with all the security there, there had been serious problems. So yeah, again, I just say I can only speak as I find, I'd just like to reiterate that my friends and my family have been visiting the exchange for years, 10 or 18 years now, under the current management. But we've always found it a safe and friendly, calm place to watch a football match and to have a pint of beer. I'm very sorry to hear about these instances that have happened recently, but in my view, they're not typical and perhaps due to the very strange times in which we're living right now. Hopefully, they'll be over soon. Yeah, I'd just like to say that for me, the exchange plays an important role in Winchester. Two pubs actually, the Exchange and the Eclipse, they're my favourite pubs in Winchester. Because, you know, they make a pleasant change from all these diner pubs everywhere where you feel so you can't have a pint of beer without having a meal. So I value the exchange and I value the management of the exchange. And I just hope we will be allowed to continue providing that service to the community for the years to come. Thank you, that's all I want to say. Thank you. Thank you, Mr Clark. Is there any questions? Thank you very much. Okay, we'll therefore move on to Mr Cavan's.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. And you have my written representation which supports the application made by the police. I should mention that I'm a resident and live nearby in St Thomas Street. And my representation, as well as supporting the application made by the police, asks for consideration to be given to imposing additional conditions to achieve compliance with the licensing objectives. These additional conditions include a reduction of opening hours to 11pm on Fridays and Saturdays. And I note that other representations have also asked for consideration to be given to reduce opening hours. The council's licensing policy of 2019, and I think the specific paragraph is 2.23, I hope I've got that right, recognises that opening hours beyond 11pm are of legitimate concern, particularly in central Winchester. And central Winchester is what we're talking about here. The exchange backs onto an area which is heavily residential, not exclusively, but very heavily residential. So that late night disorderly behaviour and noise have a negative impact on the quality of life of residents. And that's not to mention passersby at that time of day or night. A reduction of opening hours on Fridays and Saturdays to 11pm would help mitigate the impact. This wouldn't be an least exceptional. Other pubs in central Winchester have closing hours of no later than 11pm. Excuse me. Examples are the Wickham Arms, the Elkhorn Line and the Bishop on the Bridge. And apart from a closing time of 11.30pm on Saturdays, the William Walker. There are pubs nearby, and I mentioned the Eclipse, O'Neill's, they do have later opening hours, but they aren't a problem, so clearly something is wrong with the exchange. In my representations, I also suggested restrictions on the broadcast of sport commentaries on outdoor screens and speakers and a limit on the maximum numbers in the beer garden at the back of the pub. As we've heard from P C Swallow, these are both contexts where seriousness behaviour and incidents have taken place. That's really all I want to say. You have my written representation and I would ask the members to take these representations into account in their deliberations. Thank you very much.
Please, Mr Cavan, take questions.
Thank you very much. Has this behaviour been worse since we were out in the hospitality or was it further before the Covid crisis?
I think it's been, I've noticed the noise over a considerable time. That's going back to all the Covid crisis. I can't give you specific dates and times because one isn't always has a notebook and a pencil and one isn't equipped like the police or the special constables to record specific incidents. But certainly there had been incidents of noise and I do, to get access to St Thomas Street, I do walk down or drive down St Clement Street, which is the back of the beer garden exits onto St Clement Street. And I have had cases where there have been quite a few people in the street, sort of in the way. Generally, a bit worse for wear. I have to be honest, I'm not personally been physically affected. I've not been accosted, I've not been pushed over or anything like that. So I'm talking, I think, very much about particular limitations and reduction in opening hours. I'm talking very much about particularly noise and also some concern for people who might be coming down to St Clement Street of having caught a train or coming back, say, from London and then walking back to where they live, which is in the St Thomas Street and that area around there. Which, as I said, is quite heavily residential. So I hope that helps. Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr Cavan. Now move on to Mr White.
Thank you, Charlie. I've also made a short submission, a brief submission. I live on the other side of St Thomas Street, a bit further away than Mr Cavan's. The points that I would want to make are to do with noise. In terms of noise, there is often, although it's a lesser problem than it is for those who live on the west side of St Thomas Street. We are aware of noise, we've been aware of noise for many years, I've lived in St Thomas Street, I've been back to fire. In recent years, the noise has increased. It probably is related to football matches and events that have been televised in the pub. But it does seem to me that something could be done about that, that there should be some step that could be taken to control the noise. The Winchester licensing policy 2019, our C4 and H24 sets out a series of steps that could be taken to control the noise. And I'm sure that some sort of acoustic curtain would be arranged to prevent or to reduce the effect on neighbours. The other point that I've made was to do with obstruction of St Clement Street. I frequently had to almost nudge people out of way when driving down St Clement Street and people with glasses because we're drunk, people who really ignore the local traffic. It seems completely unnecessary that that occurs. A point that I didn't make in my letter, but perhaps is relevant. We live in an area with a lot of pubs. I think there are five pubs that are closer to where we live than the exchange. We don't have a problem from those other pubs. Whereas, just reverting to the noise point again, it's been suggested that everything be switched off at 10.30. I mean, that would help if that actually happens, 10 o'clock would be better. I think, I don't think I can add anything more to that. That's just some help to the committee.
Thank you, Mr White. First of all, yeah. First of all, thank you very much, all three of your audience. I do know there's a member of the public in the gallery, but he is obviously observing what is actually happening. So actually not physically noticing it. So moving on from there, we'd like to take the licence holder, Mr Clark, please. Would you like to address the meeting?
Thank you, sir. If I may, I'll deal with that on Mr Clark's behalf. I'd like to start with the details that the police brought before you. So in the application for review, you have a total of nine issues over eight days between the 29th of August 2020 and the 19th of June 2021, 80 day thing since April of this year. Four of those that you will see were actually called in by the pub. So they were not incidents where the police attended, and as I understand it, there was no police attendance. So we would like to think that the responsible and proper response of the pub in calling in an incident would not withhold against the pub at this stage. They've done what they should do by calling in. Very helpfully, sir, we've seen some videos of the young man who was unfortunately pulled over by his friend and injured his head on the 13th of June, giving a fuller picture of what happened. When he addressed it, sir, P C Swallow indicated that he had fallen over because he was drunk and that was the only reason. And took Mr Clark to task for suggesting that he had been pulled or pushed out of the door. You may recall in the video that you hear his friend apologising for pushing him or pulling him. And several references are made to pulling him. Sir, there is also a discrepancy between something that P C Swallow said and the video he's indicating, P C Swallow indicated that the young man, either his name is Cody, had only just turned 18 and that this was his first drinking bout. That was actually something that was raised by Inspector Laura, and I've forgotten, I'm sorry, I beg your pardon, at the incident, whether or not he had just turned 18 years with his first bout and he said, no, he'd been eating for quite a few months. So perhaps that's not quite accurate. So the eight videos that you saw relate to that incident and I say are helpful in clarifying exactly what did happen. That, and then you've got the assault where you saw the young man, alleged perpetrator of the assault being interviewed by the police. And you heard his repeated claims that he was so drunk that he couldn't possibly remember what had happened when he was questioned about the offence. But then his reflection became selective as the interview went on. And the police obviously asked him about that selective memory. So you can draw your own opinion as to the reason why you think that young man was stressing his drunkenness. So you will have noticed in that interview that the police referred to CCTV coverage that had been produced by the pub showing the actual incident. And that shows the group of a total of five men, including this young man, legally for pub. And there is no evidence on that particular videos of them staggering, being unable to hold their feet or showing obvious evidence of being drunk. So we then have the video of the quarter finals match. And although not raised today by the police, I would just like to say that my opinion is that that actually shows Mr Clark being able to manage a situation really very well. Because this was during the quarter finals, we all know how excited everybody was at that time with England actually being in the quarter finals. It had not been running long when this group made amusements of themselves. And Mr Clark and his staff decided that they must be removed to prevent further disturbance. And he manages to do that without any issue. He gets these quietly out of the pub, all right, they're chanting when they're outside. I'm afraid that they weren't the only ones chanting that night. And Mr Clark is seen in the video as definitely one person in particular who was the main instigator of the problem, whom he was talking down. And the whole group eventually just quietly. Then, sir, we hear about the fight on the 24th of July, which is one of the things that was specifically mentioned. But so before I move on to that, I think I should go back to the point that P C Swallow made when he queried Mr Clark, questioning whether plastic glasses would be more suitable than glasses. He didn't feel that they were, said P C Swallow, and he couldn't begin to understand that. I'm querying that as well, sir, so I asked him about it. And the reason given, actually makes a break in the sense, if you have young men sitting around at a football match with plastic glasses, as we've seen on the television, and a goal is scored or something happens, the plastic glass is very likely to be slung up in the air with all that alcohol or liquid in it, which could cause problems and disturbance. It is, Mr Clark tells me, he's never known that happened. If you present them with proper glasses, they don't do it. So that was the reason, sir, that he didn't want to have plastic glasses going in the air. So back to the 24th of July, Mr Clark had to remove a customer, as we've heard. He did manage to get him out, it was a difficult situation. There were a lot of young men, some of whom were up for a fight, they weren't as usual. There were a lot of young men, some of whom were up for a fight. They weren't as usual, cheering tell. And Mr. Clark made a very pertinent comment about the training in that respect. They, as I say, did manage to get them out, but he did have a punch thrown out to him and a fight then ensued. So there's an allegation or a hint in the email from P C Swallow. But there was an unwillingness from the agreed parties to provide information. So Mr. Clark does not remember that at all. There was a P C who visited, as you've heard. He asked him if he wanted the man who had been involved in the charge. And from his recollection, Mr. Clark believes he said, I'll do whatever you want, but I don't want him in my pub again. The policeman suggested getting him on pub watch, the banning aspect of pub watch. And Mr. Clark very readily agreed with that suggestion. Full details were included in the incident log. He's very happy to provide any information that the police may want, but hasn't actually been asked for him at this time. So before I deal briefly with the points that those living nearby have raised, perhaps I could just tell you a little bit about the pub. You'll be aware, it's a sports pub. You will also be aware of the extraordinary situation that licensees and indeed everybody has found themselves in, which with Covid, huge pressures of the pandemic itself and the government restrictions put on the hospitality sector. And of course, the Exchange was caught up with that. Like many other in the sector, Mr. Clark has found staffing a challenge during the pandemic. The staff there have always had to cope with the requirements of the Licensing Act and other legislation. But on top of that, they now had what seemed to be ever changing and obviously had to be strict Covid regulations and recommendations to absorb and implement. Tenants, and Mr. Clark is a tenant of this pub as opposed to an unhoused house. He is both the Friends License Holder and the D P S. They do not receive the same sort of support from their landlords as managers do from their those who live up to them. The Exchange is one of very few city centres with outside seating with its in its boundaries. And when relaxation permitted, such areas should be used with the necessary protection. His customer profile did indeed change quite dramatically. And larger numbers of young males in particular, his behaviour and attitude often failed to relax though, but his regular King Hotel did visit his pub. And it was a long learning curve, all concerned, to educate staff and customers as to what was acceptable and what how that would be controlled. Mr. Clark was always very conscious of the need to ensure public safety, both with regard to Licensing Act and Covid restrictions. And the staff had to be additionally trained in those extensive requirements. The pub also had to change the way it operated in the usual way. This exceptionally unusual set of circumstances started what I call Mr. Clark's firefighting experience. He was constantly updating staff following government guidelines, as well as his usual responsibilities. Lockdown posed problems. The various steps out of lockdown had their own issues. Those who'd been closeted for so long were keen to get out and enjoy themselves. And behaviour of some was more exuberant than before. On top of this came the Euros. The necessary work to control customers over this period even more intense than before. As well as looking to control drinking that arose out of the excitement and celebrations surrounding England's success, there was a need to try and prevent customers from shouting or screaming in Sally. Some customers were finding it difficult to accept controlling guidance from young, often female staff and reacted inappropriately to that. Mr. Clark was constantly under extreme pressure and finding himself very kind exhausted. His focus was on the implementation, as he found them of the rules and regulations affecting public safety. And he admits, as he has done in a letter to the police, that his paperwork at this time was not at the top of his priority list and was not getting done. He calls his hands up with apologies in respect of the concerns the police justified in raising about this. What's slow on the uptake? Mr. Clark, did you use the term suggested by the police in their email of January to April? And prior to my coming on the scene, if I can put it like that, it had been signed by all the staff working over the various shifts at the pub. As will be noted in our letter to the police in your supplementary papers, Mr. Clark had readily accepted that it would be appropriate to have additional provisions on the last things to control the future of the premises. And they were drafted and provided to the police. I do accept that the police as P C Swallow is coming well and great at that time, so was unable to respond to it later. He also offered conditions to address some of the concerns raised by some of the residents who've made representations. On Wednesday afternoon, this week, we received the very much fine and stricter conditions that the police are now proposing. These are the sorts of conditions, I would just beg you to suggest, that you would more commonly expect to see on high capacity, on vertical drinking venues, for example, Montos. I don't know, but I would suggest that they indeed some of the stricter if you decide to impose them that you have in this area. Because imposition of conditions requires consideration, as you'll be aware, of their appropriateness and their proportionality. As a lawyer, I question both the appropriateness and proportionality of several of those conditions. But Mr. Clark is very keen to work with the police and has only asked me to challenge the security condition and to raise a question about the till prompt condition. I'll deal with the till prompt condition first because that is a comparatively easy one to deal with. There is a request there for the till to have a till prompt. Mr. Clark's till at this juncture does not have this. I understand that there's a possibility that he may be capable of being installed on the till. It will require some sort of software. If it isn't, then he'll have to buy a new till with that software available. It will be around five thousand pounds. So this sort of till prompt condition is normally imposed if you are concerned about underrating and drinking. There have been some hints that they believe that it is happening, but there is absolutely no evidence before the commitment of any underage drinking. So I should leave it with you as to whether we believe that's a sort of admission in any event. With regards to the F I A security staff, sir, you will be aware that that has been accepted as a principle. And Mr. Clark had already arranged for two of his responsible members of staff to undertake the F I A licence course. I understand that they're waiting for the actual licence that they've taken and passed the course. So the principle is accepted. So the times when they should be employed is something that needs input and discussion. If the condition is imposed in the terminology that the police have asked, that would mean every single day of the week throughout the year. Because this is a sports pub and it has broadcast live television as well. It's also open on Fridays and Saturdays and for some of the seasonal bank holidays. So that having to have three members of F I A licence security staff who are only capable of doing that one job, they're not allowed to deviate and do other jobs on the site. That is it. That's what they're there for. So other staff have to be employed to do the usual staffing jobs. I understand that. That's not quarrelled with, but that is a situation. And would be ruined if only got a handful of people in the hubbing of the winter to stop the case. It wouldn't be on our floor if, uh, Clark would be found out to be ruled upon condition that was that strict. So, sir, maybe suggest the following as, and this is still very strict, three, three door staff for a premises where you probably have the maximum people. It's it's hard to comprehend it, but I've been told that we're to try and work with the police and we're trying to do that. So what we're suggesting, and I do have copies of this, it may be sensitive if I give them out and I said to you. It's in blue on the play of one. P C Swallow knows that the people may have addressed that. Would you like me to give those to you? May I take them straight to the, thank you. There are plenty of people from the trip in to your office. No, I'm sorry, did I keep one? I was given the wrong thing. So I I I hope it's self explanatory, but Mr. Clark, with his experience, tells me that the matches that he believes should be properly controlled with three door staff because of the potential are major football matches, which he defines as England games in World Cup, Euros and Champions League, quarterfinals, the F A Cup final and Premier League games with Southampton under top fourteen or two top four teams playing. And then, so we have in So, sir, you then in parentheses got, unless it is previously agreed in writing with the police, that a lesser number will suffice. Because with with some games, it may be that it's too foreign country, it's really not going to suffice. We're very much hoping that there will be an improved relationship with the police and that they will be able to discuss the genuine door security requirements between them. And if the police agree, then that number could be reduced on those occasions. When I say in writing, sir, I'm an anticipatory mail or not with that. Other other events will be risk effects. And if the necessary F I A life staff will be employed at a minimum ratio, one per one hundred customers or parts thereof expected. So, sir, I've taken out the days preceding UK bank holidays. Because that's a Sunday. It's not usually a busy day. They close at ten thirty. It's not usually an attractive day for people to come to the extent that they're going to need four supervision. On Fridays and Saturdays, I've added in if the premises are open after eleven P M. Because, sir, I would respectfully suggest that you would always expect door staff and just the pub just going up in the end. It's not going to be particularly attractive or or required, that sort of level of security. And then, so the only other amendment that I would respectfully suggest to the wording is the terminal hour of operation. So we are now five paragraph down and talking about the door supervisors patrolling against, sir. We're not taking issue with it, but I would ask that the word immediate be included before vicinity to prevent any challenge being made about this land leasing or for the door staff going too far away in the back which would six their local area. The other issue I have, sir, is on the fourth paragraph down, wanting counting persons in and out of the venue. So this is not a matter of, it's not a high capacity venue or venue with fixed capacity. And with respect, I don't think that either of them is appropriate or necessary, as I would ask about P C Swallow. So with that exception and subject to my legal obligations, Mr. Clark has no problem with those other very strict conditions on that are suggested. So still on the subject of conditions, you will be aware that we offered conditions. And some of those, I would ask you to remove because they now need taken over, as it were, by these more strict conditions. And perhaps I could just for a clarity run through those. So on moderation, which is in your supplementary agenda, I'm saying that these are not covered by the police conditions, which are more full, and that's licensing objective, one, preventing crime disorder, one, two, four, and four. I would ask you to keep number three, which is every effort will be made to prevent customers leaving the premises with open bottles of cans. Because that's a good condition that is
Can I just interject? What page number are you on, please? Can they start at seven, maybe, if you're interested?
Let's see. To you, in this supplementary agenda.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Would you like me to rehearse that so now that we found the page? Thank you. So, sir, I'm asking for removal of on this list, condition licensing objective, one, preventing crime disorder, one, two, four, and yes, and four. One, two, and four, as they're requested by the police and in that list. I'm leaving in condition three, every effort will be made to prevent customers leaving the premises with open bottles of cans. The security duties at five, and the dispersal policy at seven, because they are in to address issues that have been raised by residents in the area. Mr. Clark would like to address those. On the public safety, they should all stay in because they're currently on the licence. And preventing the public nuisance, one is already on the licence. Two, offering a telephone number, again, to please stay in because it's offered to the residents. And then the condition that speakers in the pub garden will be switched off at ten thirty P M. The whole of the protection of children can, the whole of one, the protection of children can be removed. Two and three are already on the licence. I hope that makes sense, sir.
The one you have in mind is six.
Yes, so that's already on the licence. Thank you. So that means the women. So I hope that makes sense, but if you have any questions on that before I move on.
Yes.
Okay, just one question on the events. So these players in football clearly have Instagram bug. They have a sheet bug in the in this list of events, thinking of This is a cheap rugby, the, the, the list of events, thinking of the, the dance games.
Oh, there's an example to answer that. Thank you very much.
Generally speaking, can you get much differently on rugby? And in 21 years, this is the first time I have had any trouble with rugby uh game. Um, they split it. It weren't, it's standard rugby. It certainly does get quite busy, but England games in the Six Nations, um, at any time even play a game against a big nation like New Zealand or Australia, um. And I'm getting this for years, but honestly, that is the first time in 21 years I have ever had. I, I, I think it's probably as a result of my clientele changing over these last few months and I, I, I would expect most of that clientele to disappear in the next few months. I don't, it's, I, yeah, I, I can, it seems to be going back the way it was anyway. So, um. But I mean, it's, it's, it's a needed requirement on rugby matches, but I just, I just think it's been ruining the atmosphere at the pub. There's, there's people shouting around the pub, um, really, a rugby crowd is never been that sort of crowd as far as I remember. But this is the first time, honestly, I've, I've never seen an incident like that.
That's fine. Thank you.
I want to ask, Mr. Clark, you've got a condition, if this is accepted, that other events would be risk assessed and if deemed necessary, SIA licensed staff would be employed at the minimum ratio of one per 100 customers or part thereof expected. Would a rugby game come within that definition?
Well, it needs to be a success, certainly, but I guess I, once in 21 years, obviously, you're you're talking sort of taking every year probably known as a dog on the British land. So, once in 200. Uh, yeah. It's, you don't want any, so it needs to be a success.
Well, thank you.
And thank you for that. I just want to make sure we can be very likely, quite this register.
Thank you, sir.
I am aware that we did say right at the beginning that we should have roughly equal timings on presentations. Um, I am aware that you have still got some more to go. So could you try to?
I'll just shut for a second. Thank you. So I, I think what we're talking about here is the management of the pub and I will say very quickly that we have Ellen Hardy and Mr. Carrington who have both expressed views on management. And may I say, sir, that neither Mr. Clark nor I have solicited either of those, um, uh, people to come. I'm delighted that Mr. Carrington is here today. It's the first time either of us have seen him. So, uh, I, I I would be grateful if you could take close account of what he has said as somebody who's been there on the spot. You've also got the entry of the, the D B hat child Facebook about the way the pub reacts responsibly. So we all cope with extreme pressure in different ways. Mr. Clark with his army background and solitaire temperament tends to go quiet. When he does that, he is not, um, has, has been assumed indifferent, dismissive or being less than engaging. And he does seem bored what he's been said. And he has demonstrated over a period of at least 20 years that he can manage a licensed premise as well, not only has he managed or run as a tenant uh, the exchange, but he's been eight years at Althes and six years at William Walker, all without incident. With benefit of hindsight, he firmly wishes here taking very much more notice than he did of the, um, comments that the police were making. An alarming wake up call for him, sir. If you remove him as DPS, it could financially force him and his children to leave a home that he's had for the past 20 years with a limited chance of him being able to continue a career in this business. Whole episode just made him realise that the training is key. He would benefit from training. He's already had two staff undertaken past the ALPH course. He himself has booked himself on a DPS course. They're not so easy to find, but he's got one booked. This is not online face to face DPS course, the I I A B, uh, and that is coming up. So I would respectfully submit that there has been a poisonous cocktail of COVID controls and consequences coupled with the Euros and England stripped of a final which, as Mr. Clark has said, has now passed and won't return. Lessons have been learnt, in Mr. Clark's case, the hard way. It's inevitable, but there will still be incidents. It's the mixture of any in, in the city. And that's one of the reasons that Mr. or PC Swires has suggested the conditions and the conditions are being controlled. But the firefighting situation described earlier, which prevented him giving prime attention not only to compliance but to annotating components with the licensing objectives has passed. So as regards prevention of nuisance objectives, you will notice that there is no representation from my environmental health officer. So finally, Mr. Ra, Mr. Clark has accepted a raft. If you will accept these, of very strict conditions, we would respectfully submit that they are actually above and beyond what will be needed to remedy the causes of concern that instigated the review. And they will closely control the future operation of these premises. I believe that you can have every confidence in the man who has been DPS until this same episode in an otherwise unblenished career as Spaniard for 20 years. And that he has proved himself well and truly capable and indeed even better than before as a result of the steps that he is now putting into place. Lessons he's learned of higher level training being undertaken. And having regard to the strong remedial effect of those conditions and the exceptional hardship which could also build on his human waste that would be caused by removing for his DPS. I would most respectfully submit that it would be excessive and wrong to remove him as DPS. And urge you please to respond to this application by just the imposition of the condition suggested by the police with the minor conditions we've suggested. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. You now proceed to questions. That's all. Any questions?
No, no further questions.
Go on, someone else.
DPS require certain things, including logbooks and everything else. Um, it appears that none of this is historically done. Um, is that actually back the case or have you got written logs from prior COVID processes?
I, we did do logs before the COVID crisis, but most of that is stuff in my office that's been put there during the, during the lockdown. Fortunately, that's, this logbook is from we finished finding one from, to, 2019. Yeah.
So I think it has to be accepted that the paperwork that was kept was not up to standard. Mr. Clark doesn't have to accept that. Um, the paperwork has been dramatically upgraded. It needed to be. It has been. The folder on the desk there is the paperwork completed, um, for each member of staff on the training, on the age verification, all the policies. Um, and that folder will now be kept on site with all the unnecessary log books in. And so that lesson can hopefully be more, but so your rights, the paperwork with more touches back.
Can I make a quick comment in relation to that last sentence?
Do you all have another chance in a sec?
It's in relation to additional efforts that's just been presented to the hearing. I've got no information about a folder of additional recorded documentation, staff training details, and providing security all on myself.
So I'm not providing it. I wonder if you want to. I'm, I'm just saying it there.
Okay, no chance.
In position, sir, is if everyone's in agreement in relation to the document, then it can be seen by everybody. But if anyone objects, then it's a common decision.
That is agreed with. Okay.
Pardon me. I would object that we've had, uh, nearly 10 weeks of, um, statutory timelines for, for this review and timelines afterwards has been out of time to produce documentary evidence and details of the process. Actually, it hasn't. If PC Swires objects, then it can't be, can't be considered, sir. Sorry. If PC Swires objects, then it can't be considered, sir.
Okay, thanks. I'm not a misstep. Um, I just want one or two things I'd like to ask. The till prompt, are you indicating that it would be 500 pounds to add over the till? Um, how many tills do you actually, oh, just the one. Okay. Um, counting in and out. Um, I know of many locations, not in this city, in other cities, where this is a normal practice because of capacity within the venue itself. And could you just hold on to that? Any reluctance that appears?
Practically, it's, it's going to be quite difficult because we have a back door and a front door. And the practicalities of Jerry, who's coming in, but we had to. I don't know if you see.
And one comment you've not challenged is the serving of people who are clearly under the influence.
Um, my staff are all very aware not to serve people. It would run anywhere becomes a problem and we know that people get drunk, become a problem. People are regularly cut off and asked to leave at the exchange.
We'll now move on to the next part and that is coming back to the applicant. Um, you have a right to.
Would you wish to summarize my, my case now? Is that what, the sacred?
That's the morning, please.
Yep. Uh, thank you, Jeff. So since the reopening of the hospitality industry, Mr. Clark has found to have pulled the license objective. It's the only pub in Wembley that has done so. As prescribed within the licensing act, something, uh, one eighty two guides, I've taken a steps approach to tackle the incidents at the pub. All advice, informal and form, has been ignored and our staff has been assaulted both physically and sensually. We've not been provided with any evidence of any diligence matters being addressed or implemented. Mr. Clark's gesture practically calling the police on all the incidents I've discussed is a good thing. If these incidents did not involve over in top station caused by the venue, you can no longer control them or reject them, I would be able to agree with him, but I can't. No evidence has been provided of any of his staff, uh, taking SIA courses, um, as been promised several times. It's also got to be noted that under the securities industry act, um, those staff cannot be employed at venue in a security capacity unless there is someone at the venue who is also qualified and registered with the securities industry. Uh, that is not the case. So even those two people, if they are successful in passing the course, cannot legally be employed at the venue. The conditions that have been proposed by myself still stand and I, I do, um, I will not mention the conditions proposed, um, by Mr. Clark. And I do have some concerns. Uh, the security of the SIA is fundamental in, in my review and representation, uh, to my safety and security for both patrons and staff at the venue. Quite, I am minded to, to media slightly on, on certain matters. And I will agree to, to some of the proposals submitted in relation to security as highlighted in blue on that, that additional document. The only part that I cannot agree with on that is the first sentence that says if a premises open after 2300 hours. We've already heard from two local residents who say that incidents occurred prior to that time and asked, have asked for the terminal hour to be brought back. By having that line sentence within there, it would mean that there were no security provisions required if the venue shuts at 11 o'clock. And therefore I would ask that part be excluded. Every other part of that condition, although I, I do cringe a little bit when I, when I hear the words of risk assessment. That can be taken gurgly with all of it. And I, I tend not to put those in the condition, but I, I will accept that at this time and I will accept the other part of those conditions. I would also accept the details of patrolling the immediate facility, um, over the pub. In relation to the counting of numbers at the pub, um, every venue has more than one entrance and exit. Um, and when required to do so, will have members of security with, uh, physical clickers. And what they will do is they will communicate with each other on a regular basis, normally every 30 minutes um, to determine how many have come in, how many have gone out. So they will have a, a very good estimation of numbers of people within those processes and it will be that number that is recorded. It is certainly not an impossible task just because you have, uh, two entrances and it's at the pub side. I would respectfully suggest that that be met. In relation to, uh, the proposed conditions on supplementary agenda that we discussed from page 14. Again, I, I do have, uh, some concerns with, with some of the wordings. In fact, as we said, some of these can now be, be removed, um, and replaced with mind if you are minded to, to accept those. Um, however, um, some points, as I said, French crime saw in number six. To further the zero drug policy, the premises license order, there is no such thing as a zero tolerance drug policy. Um, it, it is a phrase in the term that's used by the industry to, to back people. They, that, that, that's what they do. I would suggest that a zero tolerance drug policy would mean that every single person entering the premises would be fully searched, whether they have drugs wipes and they have drugs box. Clearly, that, that's not going to happen. So, so let's not use the word zero tolerance drug policy because it doesn't exist of that. They will not be able to achieve that. I have, uh, requested a, uh, um, a drugs policy be implemented in agreement with the police and I have a very, uh, I think there may be a slide, and in fact, it's actually on, uh, the pub watch, uh, which is the pub watch website that will detail how a venue should tackle and deal with drugs. If that policy is, is accepted, the numbers should be sufficient, but the, the phrase and terminology of a zero tolerance drug policy, I would suggest should not appear. Um, I, I do have issues with, in issues one, two, and three on public safety. Um, I, I would certainly suggest that they are covered by, uh, separate legislation. Um, certainly number three would be under fire safety and as the RIT guidance, um, states that, um, if, if areas are committed by other parts of the legislation, then they should not appear, uh, upon a premises license. And I would, I would respectfully suggest that, that all of those three actually don't need to appear on any, any premises. I think that was it in relation to, uh, to, to the conditions. But ultimately I've heard nothing or been presented with any evidence to change my opinion. Um, that Mr. Clark should not be removed as a DPS.
Thank you, Mrs. Paul. Any other questions? Any further questions? There's one down. Thank you. It would be normal now that we go into exempt business. Um, but as we've all seen the, um, videos, um, has anybody got any questions they want to ask with regard to videos? If no one has, then we will not go into exempt business. Um, coming out to a point where we would ask you to retire for a short while while we, the committee deliberate on our fine case. We will pull you as on the way, nine forty-four.
Thank you very much.
So just to clarify, there's a breakout room downstairs, I think, Charlie, to the empty room. Yeah, and then we've got toilet facilities down there, so it's got everyone down shortly.
Thank you.
It will be, yeah. It's a regular view. It's just a nice, very good tag.
Okay, ready, chair? Thank you, welcome back. Sorry for the long delay, but as you can appreciate, this has been quite a complicated situation. In reaching our decision, the subcommittee has clearly considered the application or review. The representatives made by responsible authorities and the premises licensed in Holgate, it has taken into account the council statement of the licensing policy and the Home Office guidance issued under section one eighty-six of the Licensing Act two thousand and two thousand and thirty. The duties under the Crime and Disorder Act of nineteen ninety-eight and the rights set out in the Human Rights Act of nineteen ninety-eight. The subcommittee has concluded that the premises licence should be amended as follows, for the following reasons. Upon the hearing of the full review of the premises licence at the Exchange, nine, sorry, nine Southgate Street, which is at Hampshire, SO twenty-three, nine DZ, following, further to the conditions of the application for the review by PC Brian Swallow, on behalf of Hampshire Constancy, representations from other persons, the supplementary material from, that's what, that's what it's? Oh, sorry. On behalf of Mr Clark, supplementary material from PC Swallow and the evidence made today, but excluding the folder of information brought by Mr Clark and his representative. Decision, the decision of the licensing subcommittee on the thirteenth of August two thousand and twenty-one is as follows. The licence will continue, subject to the permanently amended conditions detailed below. We do not think, so we do not propose to remove the designated premises supervisor, Mr Colin Clark, from the premises licence. Reasons, we do find there have been failures in all four licensing objectives. We also note that there have been favourable comments from customers who frequent the Exchange. However, with the factual evidence that the licensing objectives are not being promoted outweighs any positive commentary from the public. Mr Clark, as a licence holder and DPS, has been through an exceptional period, which include not, is not limited to the Covid nineteen pandemic, lockdown and subsequent restriction regulations, and the peak of the patrons' return to public life, the European football challenges, and the change of clientele culminating in the unusual persistence of circumstances, pressures of circumstance. The general public, however, have stated that the issue of the noise and some social, antisocial behaviour was only increased prior to Covid nineteen. It is also noted that a number of other establishments do not suffer issues to the same scale of evidence as that of the Exchange at nine Southgate Street. It has been accepted by Mr Clark that standards have slipped generally. The evidence clearly shows the necessity to adjust the licence conditions to the proposed, to those proposed, to ensure the promotion of the licensing objectives are met, in particular, like not to not limit to the lack of monitoring, challenging, refusing to serve, and rejecting those who are over intoxicated. Way clear from the incidents recorded by PC Swallow, application for the review, the video evidence showing general antisocial behaviour and the incidents of assault, both physical and sexual, filmed by alcohol, the lack of proper security evidence in all the video footages, and the email from Laura Taylor on the fourteenth of June two thousand and twenty-one, and any record of either training or contracting, contracting insecurity staff. In acceptance, an acceptance of the complete absence of any record keeping on the ejections, refusal, intoxications, and under-registered, no evidence of sufficient training material or time spent with training staff. Therefore, the amended conditions are as follows. Taking the police draft conditions, appendix seven, amended by the solicitor for Mr Clark, and supplied to the subcommittee today, the conditions are as follows. From twenty hundred hours until closing time of the venue on Fridays and Saturdays, when the venue is showing a major football match defined as England games in the world, England games in the World Cup, European Champions League from the quarterfinals, and the FA Cup final, and the Premier League games with Southampton, and a top four team or top, or two top four teams. Three frontline supervisors, SIA licensed security staff shall be employed at the venue, unless it is previously agreed with the police in writing that the number, the lesser number will suffice. Other events will be risk assessed and deemed necessary, SIA licensed staff will be employed at a minimum of one to one hundred customers or part thereof, excepted. This number is to include only frontline, frontline door supervisor, SIA security staff employed solely on the door stroke security duties, safety and security at the venue. We then move to the following paragraph, up to the, to include the counting of persons in and out of these events. A nominated member of the security staff shall be positioned at the entrance exit doors and shall be responsible for accounting persons in and out of the venue. They shall use the device suitable for accounting approved by the police. Licensing department responsibility for the area. As such, an accurate number of persons in the venue shall be known at all times. The venue is showing a television, major football match, or other event assessed and required security staff, required security staff. As the paragraph regards the management of customers leaving the premises, the word immediate shall remain. One correction to the remaining proposal, proposed conditions is under training. Second sentence should read, anyone not attending, attending the pass rate shall not be permitted to sell or authorised to sell the alcohol until pass rate had been attained. I now refer to our solicitor.
Just before everyone ended earlier on, it came to our attention that there's some of the conditions in the original proposed conditions from the funds that may or may not have been to the, what's just been read out, so it'd be worthwhile just to be, be clearly asked on what is also to be included. So under proposed conditions, prevention of crime and disorder, paragraphs three, five, six, and seven remain, are included, forgive me, under prevention of public nuisance, paragraph two, in relation to telephone number being made for residents, and three speakers in the background being switched, and thirty, should all be included as well. Thank you.
We believe that if acted upon, the proactively managed, these conditions should result in the promotion of the licensing objectives. The parties will be formally notified of the decision in writing shortly. This notification will include details of the right to appeal against the decision to the magistrates court, which must be made within twenty-one days of notification. And I thank all members and participants for their attendance and presentation here today, and I'm going to close at.
Before you, yeah, sorry. Does appear to be omitted, under prevention of public nuisance, paragraph one, in relation to signs requesting customers be quiet, so to include that as well, please. Please, Mr, I apologize.
Thank you very much. This will all be in the documentation that comes to, to the best of practice. Well, thank you, and we close the meeting at six minutes past two.
So thank you very much for your endeal offices for all the time you've taken on over the Saturday. Thank you, Sandra.